Call this meeting order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda are two proclamations. The first one will be Give Grandly, Give Local Day, and the second will be Marine Corps League Week. Will anybody here to receive the Give Grandly, Give Local Day meet me at the podium? Well, I will read this and hand it to Ann for distribution, and then we'll go to the next one. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Perfect. Whereas Silver City is a town blessed by numerous nonprofit organizations which provide invaluable services such as sheltering our homeless, feeding our hungry, and caring for our youth; and whereas Give Grandly, Give Local Day, May 5, 2015, is the second community-wide giving event hosted by the Grant County Community Foundation, online at www.grantcountycommunityfoundation.org; and whereas Give Grandly, Give Local Day shall grow the spirit of giving and raise as much money as possible for the nonprofits in the Silver City area; and whereas through the Grant County Community Foundation and its partner, the Southwest New Mexico Nonprofit Coalition, Give Grandly, Give Local Day shall inspire the public to support our nonprofit organizations on this one day, May 5, 2015. Now therefore, I, Michael S. Maronis, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim May 5, 2015, as the second-ever Give Grandly, Give Local Day, and be it further proclaimed that for all citizens, it is the official day of providing financial support for all the causes that continue to move our town forward. The next proclamation is for Marine Corps League Week. Gentlemen. Whereas the Town Council is advised of the following: Whereas the National Marine Corps League was born in 1923 under the leadership of Lieutenant General John H. Lejeune, 13th Commandant of the United States Marine Corps; and whereas the National Marine Corps League was federally chartered in 1937 and consists of 10 divisions; and whereas the New Mexico Marine Corps League entered the National League in 1985 as part of the Rocky Mountain Division; and whereas the Gaffney-Oglesby Detachment 1328 was activated on April 28, 2009, in Silver City, New Mexico; and whereas Gaffney-Oglesby Detachment 1328 is the most recently activated of the nine currently active detachments in New Mexico; and whereas Gaffney-Oglesby is actively serving our local veterans and the Silver City community; and whereas Gaffney-Oglesby will be hosting our annual Marine Corps League State Convention on April 24 and 25. Now therefore, I, Michael S. Maronis, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, in view of the inherent value of this, do hereby proudly proclaim April 19 through April 25, 2015, as Marine Corps League Week in Silver City, and encourage the community to honor those individuals who have served and continue to serve our nation and our community. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you just turn around and...
Absolutely.
One, two, three. Thank you. This is my official announcement.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your time. Okay, next item on the agenda is Public Input. You know, just to go over a little bit of some of our procedures and how they operate, how they exist, and why they exist. In Public Input, I will allow for five-minute comments from the public. In many cases, we get a lot of questions and comments, "How come we don't engage the public during public comment?" In general, since it's usually an item that is not on the agenda, we find ourselves in a position of not wanting to engage in debate and dialogue that was not advertised in our legal notice. So, we truly appreciate the input, and we need it. It helps serve us in future actions and future activities that we conduct at the council level, but we need to wait for debate and discussion at an appropriate meeting that has been appropriately noticed. So, please, as you give your input, and many of you want some dialogue, you're not going to get it at the Public Input, but if it serves and it is something that we have information and can speak to, you may hear us talk about it at Council Comments, or even during staff reports. We may discuss and reiterate what we're doing, why we're doing something that is still outside of debate that was not appropriately noticed. Just wanted to give you a little bit of clarification there. Many of those who signed up for Public Input are actually in regards to one of our items, so I'll wait and I'll allow for Public Input at that item under New Business. The only individual not related to an agenda item is Teresa Martinez for CDT Trails Days. And I'll give you a little bit of a one-minute reminder for getting close to the five minutes.
Well, thank you. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Teresa Martinez, and I'm the Executive Director of the Continental Divide Trail Coalition, and I was lucky enough to be here to be able to share some of the results and feedback from the event that took place April 10 through 12 here in Silver City, celebrating the Continental Divide Trail. It was a success from all our personal accounts, and I wanted to simply, maybe I can give you some real quick stats. We know we had just under 200 people at the event at the Little Toad, and by all accounts from the folks there that run that business, it was one of their smashing nights they've had ever, most smashing nights ever. We had about 150 who walked through the big ditch on Saturday and visited all the organizations and businesses that were there. We also had a great turnout for all the events celebrating the trails that are here in and around Silver City. We had 17 people doing trail maintenance. We had 20 people on the day hike with the Grant County Trails Group, and I think there were 10 people on the bike ride on the CDT with the Hila Hiken Bike, so that's pretty awesome. Generally speaking, though, I just, I think the best way for me to report is just a real huge thank you to everybody in the community of Silver City. Friday night, it was a huge success because we got to showcase some of your most amazing talented people here in town, like John Fakey and Philip Connors, and being able to interact with them, and showcase this amazing town, or Little Toad with the Gateway Ale, they actually celebrated with a specially brewed beer for the event. On Saturday, we got to celebrate with some incredible organizations from town, and we utilized a lot of help from the Aldo Leopold Charter School, and also the juvenile, the JPO Youth, I'm not sure what the "P" stands for, but they were instrumental in us having a great event, and also we got to really connect with them in a way that will build longer-term relationships, including potentially even inviting some of the Aldo Leopold Youth to join us in February to go to DC and do some lobbying on behalf of the trail, which is great. Also, just, I want to thank specifically Peter Penya and his entire staff, because they had the big ditch looking beautiful and were really tremendously helpful throughout the leading up to that event, to make sure some small little problems that happened were taken care of, so we really appreciate him. I'd like to thank all of our partners, the Silver City Arts and Cultural District, the Silver City Gallery Association, the Silver City Main Street Project, Silver City Food Co-op, Morning Star Sports, Hila Hiken Bike, Grant County Trails Group, the Little Toad, the Aldo Leopold Charter School, the JPO Youth, plus all the businesses like the Havelina, the Murray Hotel of Little Toad, and as recently as today, the Motel 6, who called and are working with us to provide discounts to our members and hikers, because they've noticed how much business we actually bring into their establishments, and have actually noticed a significant increase, so that's great. I also just want to thank the entire town for simply opening up their arms and your entire community to the CDT hikers, travelers, enthusiasts, and making us feel so welcomed. This event definitely showcased an incredible town that we have here, and that you have here, I should say, and that it's celebrated, this was celebrated across the globe, it was the first-time-ever event, and people really stood up and took notice of this little community, and I guarantee you that in 2016, it will be much bigger and even more exciting. So, thank you.
Thank you. You know, I said that there's four other individuals who put down for an agenda item, and I believe it would be appropriate to have those individuals speak at that, but if any of you are pushed for time and just want to have just a quick template, or just a quick simple statement, I would offer the podium to you at this point.
Yes, well, my name is Andy Payne. I live at 25 Shasta Street here in Silver, and I want to speak about your Resolution 2015, oh wait, about the conservation bonds. And I'm kind of new to these conservation bonds, but the way I understand them, they're just a great source of very cheap money that can be spent on really good worthwhile projects here that will benefit the whole community. Benefits not only just the quality of life by having green projects in our community, but there'll be jobs, where people will be working on these projects, there'll be materials bought for some of the construction items. So, basically, I just want to say, I think this is something that the council should pursue and apply for as many of these bonds as you possibly can. I think it's the right thing to do, and it'll put Silver City on the map as a community that's really trying to do some good things with green projects. And thanks for listening to input.
Excellent. And I presume everybody else will want to speak during the public comment at New Business. So, we'll move to Council Comments. Counsel Kano?
Thank you, Mayor. May I see your first? The only thing I have to mention is that this morning, I joined with representatives from the Federation of Labor and the AFT, which is the American Federation of Teachers, the Film Union, and several other unions, in celebrating and honoring our Senator, Senator Hal Morales, for the work that he did during the legislature and even before that and after it, for education in our state. I feel like our town is very blessed, because we have a senator who is willing to take on anyone to support our children, and not all of the senators in the state do that. So, whenever you see Senator Morales, just give him a thank you, and also remember to thank teachers, because the teachers that are working in this community work very hard, and they have some pretty incredible challenges that they're working against, but they're doing what they can for children, so please tell them thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I got a phone call today, and this, I guess, will be directed to you, Mr. Brown, something about the baseball field in Scott Park. One of them is kind of wavy, is one of the baseball fields. I don't know, I didn't go out there.
There's some, one of the fields has started to settle, and we're working with the contractor to identify exactly the cause of it, whether it's the landfill or their work, so, but we can't actually, we'll have to pull up the turf, so we can't actually do it until after the baseball season. So, because we have to get the turf company to come down to pull it up, so that we don't void the warranty, and then we will have to do some sampling and then deal with the contractor from there.
Before baseball season?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Also, I would like to express my opinion on the article in the paper for the Western New Mexico Party that they had for this past weekend. I know some people got upset about it, because they were too noisy, there were fireworks, they were thrown off, they were done. My old limit was there, so I know that people don't like a lot of things, but let's bear with it. Let's live and let live. People, we have to understand that this is a community thing. We need Western here. So, with that in mind, I hope that people don't get offended anymore. Also, one more thing, be very patient, because the bridge project is coming up. Drive safely. And if you get into a jam, be careful. Thank you.
Counsel Ray McSmith?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I was listening to Ms. Martinez, it sounds like you're almost one of us, and I want to really acknowledge that April has been a fun and busy month here. So, we had the trails events, and then last weekend, there was an outreach day with the Women's Club, and we had Earth Day. And I just want to acknowledge that Earth Day has been celebrated now for a really long time. The actual Earth Day just passed, but it calls to us all to be mindful of this earth and the natural resources that give us life. And the thing that I think about doing when it's Earth Day is I think about using less electricity, less petroleum, and less water. In other words, to really look upon those resources and concern them in a way that they'll be able to be here for future generations. So, with that in mind, I also want to encourage people to walk and bicycle, because that helps, and if you're walking and bicycling or driving, be careful, because we're going to have school out, bicycles all around for the tour, and then the bridge.
Counsel, Counsel Bettis?
Thank you, Mayor. I first want to congratulate Counsel Kano for also being recognized this morning for standing with, strong with working New Mexico families, along with Senator Morales and former Representative Rita Martinez, and I believe Frances Vasquez as well. So, she was quite polite in not saying that she as well was on that list of people that have done wonderful things for our community and for New Mexico working families, so I'm very, congratulations. And I wanted to mention that I was pleased to attend late, but I did attend the Disability Resources Center opening, and I think Counsel Kano might be able to speak more to that, because she was there when they actually did the thank yous and everything. But I just want to say, as, I think it's been a three-to-four-year project, I can't remember when it first came for the council, and I am pleased to see that it's come to fruition, and now it'll be making sure that those folks that need those resources have access to those resources, because they've got some wonderful things there. And I know that Counsel Kano was talking with various folks about different ways that we could make sure that those resources are available, so, thank you.
Anybody need round two? Counsel Kano?
I'm sorry, I'm still surprised about going first. Along with the Disabilities Resource Center, I just wanted to repeat what Susie Trujillo stated at that meeting, and which was at that opening, which is that that project would not have happened without Alex Brown and without James Marshall. They worked very, very hard for the town to get everything going, and you're very much appreciated. Thank you.
Anybody else? You know, just as a matter of form, it's always a pleasure to have the Honorable Senator Morales here. I should have said something right at the beginning, but thank you for coming here, and we'll have him speaking shortly during our reports, but it's always an honor to have you here at our council meetings and sharing your knowledge and your experiences. That being said, moving on, any changes to the agenda? Okay, approval of the minutes? Counsel Ray McSmith?
I move to approve the minutes of the Council of the Town of Silver City's regular council meeting of April 14, 2015.
Mr. Mayor, a second motion is stated.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the Town of Silver City's regular meeting, council meeting, minutes for April 14, 2015. Is there any discussion? We have a motion, a second, as stated. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Reports. Senator?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of the council, staff, and all those individuals in the audience, as well as all those watching through cats. I want to thank you for this opportunity to be here, and we live in a wonderful community. I'm proud where I was born and raised, and the county that we live in, and the continued work that we have with each other. I've been going, as I try to do every year after a legislative session, to each local government and to various organizations throughout the community to give a legislative update of what took place, and more so to be available to answer any questions that may have happened during this legislative session and beyond. So, I want to thank you for this opportunity to be here. I'm humbled to be in this role, and my communities that have been so supportive, to have me as their senator, I'm grateful to that as well. When you look at the past representation we've had, the reason I'm humbled, when you have people like Benny Altimirano, Manny Hidara, Tommy Foy, and Murray, the great Murray Ryan, who I had a chance to visit with last week, and ask him and say, "What do you think about the session? What could have been done?", and to tap into a resource like that, as someone that we're very blessed, again, to be in this community, so, just wanted to make sure and acknowledge all those who have walked the path before me, and hopefully have paved the way in many ways for the success that we've been having. And despite what you may have read in the newspapers or seen on TV, it was a different session, because it was the first time in six to two years that we had a divided legislature, meaning that the House was controlled by Republicans, the Senate being controlled by Democrats. But despite what we hear in the media many times, it wasn't all the gridlock and the combative debate that you would hear, at least not in the Senate. I can tell you that we had a good debate, those times that we had disagreements, but I believe that we came together on major issues of the state for the betterment of the people in New Mexico. When we came into this session, we knew, in sitting in the Legislative Finance Committee, we started getting the budget prepared right around August. We saw that we had about $288 million new dollars to invest into the state of New Mexico. Once we hit in around December, the oil prices and the gas revenue started dropping, and the way we see it is that the pump, as the gas prices come down, it's a celebration for all of us, because we pay less at the pump, but it's also less revenues for the state for programs, the projects, and needed services around. So, we became in December about $144 million of new money being spent, so it was almost reduced in half. By the time we hit in the legislative session in January, we were down to $83 million. It's still positive that we didn't have to hit the extremes that we did in 2009 when we hit the recession. At that point, we had to go in immediately and make cuts for that fiscal year, because we had a shortfall. We don't have a deficit like the federal government, because we have to balance, have a balanced budget every year, but that year, we had to make cuts immediately. Then we had to make cuts that same session for the next fiscal year. We didn't have to do that this year. We were able to go in and utilize $83 million for areas that were much needed throughout the state. I'll always look back in 2009, excuse me, 2008, at that budget, and see how we can get to the levels where we were pre-recession, because the programs that were hit the hardest, the people that were hit the hardest were those that needed the services the most. So, I'd like to get back to the 2008 levels of any new monies we have, to make sure our veteran services are where they were, our senior citizen services were where they were, our individuals with disabilities have the funding that they were given in 2008, and then our educational community. When I talk about education, I'm talking about pre-birth, all the way to graduation at college or basic education. So, I look at these things, and we were able to invest some additional dollars, not as much as we would like. So, before we go and spending dollars in areas that are new projects and new programs, I want to make sure that we can protect those vulnerable citizens of the state of New Mexico as much as possible. Overall, I thought it was a very successful session for us locally. Fortunately, being able to work on the Senate Finance Committee, being able to work with my colleagues on both sides of the aisle, has been tremendously helpful. It's also helpful when the Chairman of Senate Finance is my neighbor right down the road in Deming, Senator John Artis Smith, I have a lot of respect and appreciation for the work that he does together, to make sure that we can give the resources to our communities. So, we were able to do that. Some of the highlighted areas that we were able to get through and get funded were much-needed areas throughout the state. Talk a little bit about education. We saw that we increased dollars to the pre-day, or excuse me, to the K-3 Plus reading program. This is a program after the school year to benefit students who may need more assistance in a proactive way to get them to reading level. This was actually a program that I remember sort of getting piloted at Sixth Street Elementary School a few years back. I know that teachers like Rosemary Peddum and other teachers who were very excited about that started laying the groundwork. Now, we're going statewide. We're able to do that all across the state to benefit students and educators, to make sure that we're getting them up to level, so I think that was important. I do get frustrated when we look and see how many dollars that are being put into education, being that a majority of those dollars are not going to the school districts. And because of that, we may be increasing funding to education overall, but the dollars that go specifically for student needs and student programs are actually very minimally increased. It is a frustration, however, a majority of those dollars are going to consultants, to testing companies, and to areas such as like that, that the Department of Public Education chooses to engage with. I think that we need assessments, but at the same time, I don't think that it needs to be taken away from instruction so much, and above all, I think that there's other ways we can have student achievement, and it can be done, but the needed resources are there. So, I'll continue to advocate, to make sure that those dollars go directly to the benefit of students and programs, that they can see those gains. As far as other areas, it was really nice in our community, as I say, we live in a wonderful community. You know, we have programs, like the First Board Program. We have programs that we've piloted here in Silver City and Grant County, that have now made such an impact throughout the state, Health Councils being another one. I was able to carry a bill this year, and we were able to get $200,000 into the budget to assist Health Councils around the state, and I know that's going to be especially beneficial here this coming year to Grant County. We also, we're able to put in $100,000 for a program that's pretty much started here in Silver City and Grant County. Bob and Lauren Nelson, for years, you've seen them at every event, trying to sign up kids, so that way kids can receive a book every month that's their very own, and the parents are encouraged to read. It's a program that we're very proud of, and now we're going statewide with the $100,000 appropriation that was able to be put in there as well. Other additional areas that are important, I'm very grateful for the CYFD Secretary, then we have Lani Jacobson. Some of you may recognize her from being our Tourism Secretary. She did a good job with tourism, she's worked with us and helped us with projects like Tour of the Hila, and making sure that she understood our needs. But at the same time, as a CYFD Secretary, there was a lot of challenges that were there. One of the first things that I posed to her was saying, "We have $21 million of unspent federal funds. We need to get those dollars out there", and she acted on that. She moved to make sure that we can get more children, that childcare, or that assistance for those parents, to get to work, to have the children properly taken care of, and have an educational opportunity. And she was able to do that by moving people that were on the waiting list and getting them into those services. Hopefully, probably, we can make it up to 200% poverty level, which would increase more parents being served in that area. I know that childcare is an important issue. When you look at child abuse, when you look at children's deaths, when you look at issues such as like that that take place, it's very important that we invest the resources, especially if the resources are already there. So, we're grateful to that. We know that Western New Mexico University is extremely important to us here in Grant County. It's an economic driver. The students came to us, and they asked us if we can assist them with cameras for the campus. They wanted a safer environment. We knew that there was issues going on with the Capitol Alley, and working with Senator Smith, what we were able to do is put it into the budget, into the Higher Ed Department. And we put in $500,000 right there that would assist, and now it may not be all available for the university, but they do have that opportunity to engage in that, request for proposals, and they're going to do so, and I believe that... proposals, and they're going to do so, and I believe that they're going to be taken care of with that. I'd like to see, you know, one of the sayings of Western New Mexico University is being that the safest campus in the state of New Mexico. We want more students to come in, and we want more students to be proud of the campus that we have and the assistance with our local governments that I believe we can get there. We also had an opportunity to fund the council of governments. We each work with the council of governments and see the role that they have. Locally, we're very blessed with our council of government executive director and her staff, Pacilla DeSoto. They came and they asked for a bill to assist them, and we were able to do that. We put in the dollars that they had requested. Unfortunately, that piece got vetoed out, but we'll continue to advocate for those dollars as well. I want to make sure, and there's many other areas of funds that were appropriated that we saw that directly came to us here, LifeQuest being another example, being able to benefit those individuals who have developing disabilities, we put in about $800,000. And remind you, we only had about $83 million to work with, so you can see how well that we benefited in our local communities. Again, it really goes back to the work that you as a council does and the work that your staff does as well. One of the proudest days that I have with legislature is when it's Grant County Day, because we can showcase who we are. We're proud of who we are. It was so nice to see all the newspapers that Silver City Daily Press had laid around, the whole Capitol, and people reading about our community. It was wonderful to see our veterans bringing on their colors in the state senate and showcase our community. We did miss our Silver Stalkers this year, but we hope that they'll get back there because the legislature had missed them. And each and every one of our local communities went out there and advocated for their dollars. If I'm able to appropriate dollars, I've got to make sure that the communities themselves are advocating and justifying why those dollars are needed, and we've done exactly that. So many functions go on in Santa Fe, many events take place. I can honestly say that probably the most well-attended function is actually Grant County Day, so thank you for serving and your assistance with that as well. But when we talk about other areas, I want to talk specifically about Town of Silver and the needs that are right there. The request that came in for capital outlay was to assist with sidewalks and roads because that money was going to be used as matching dollars. We know that with the capital outlay, we don't have the amount of dollars we used to have in the past. I remember back in 2003, I believe, Senator Altamirano had about $3.1 million to work with. Every senator had that amount. Since I've been there, we've had most of the time not have any capital outlay dollars or about a $1 million amount. And this is for three counties, several municipalities, six school districts, two universities, all your water associations, and so you can see that it doesn't really go very far. But because your creativity, your city manager and staff, it's wonderful to be able to utilize and leverage dollars to help them grow. And unfortunately, that was in the capital outlay bill. We're hopeful that we're going to go back and pick that up. But when you look at these issues, I think that's foreign, and I'll get to capital outlay just in a little bit to give some clarification there as well. I also carry a bill and I work with James Marshall and Alex, and I appreciate it, them going up there and visiting with us, because there's problems with the Hold Harmless. And I've heard the concerns and I've seen the concerns, and I voiced it from the very beginning, that what the state did was broke a promise. And what the state did is push a tax increase onto you. And many of the residents get frustrated and they hear about these tax increases taking place and blame you. I don't blame you. You guys were put in this position because a promise is broken when that Hold Harmless was taken away. And because of that, I'll continue to advocate, because Silver City is being hit harder than any municipality in the state, just because of where our population falls. So I brought forward a bill, and thanks for the language and the work that we did right there. There was five bills that came in to fix the Hold Harmless. What was ironic about it was the five bills, four of those other legislators voted in favor of putting it in place to begin with. I was the only legislator who voted against it from the very beginning, so I had a little bit of leverage in talking about that and saying that this needs to be fixed, because there were so many holes in the other pieces of legislation. Alex, you requested that we come in and do a task force over the interim committee. And so we'll be doing a task force, and I requested, Mr. Mayor, that a representative from the Town of Silver City be on that, because I want to make sure we have a place at the table and have a voice on whatever takes place, that we have a voice in making sure that we're taking care of our citizens without the undue tax burden that even has been forced upon you. So that's one area there. I also spoke last week with the Department of Transportation Commission, and I requested to those commissioners that they not forget Grant County, that they not forget the needs that we have in southwest New Mexico, and that we don't go and fund new projects across the state without taking care of the projects that we have needed and have been approved long ago. One of those projects being between Deming and Hurley, excuse me, yeah, the Deming and Hurley project, and that should have been in place a long time ago. When great money ran out, basically, those were projects that were left out. I understand the funding is tight, but I also see projects like the Sill de Norte, and I see projects like in the southeast where new roads are being built, when this one still has to be done. I also asked to the commission, and I asked that the commissioner actually come in and take a ride with myself and Mr. Brown on the access areas between Rosedale Road and Fort Baird, specifically right in the area between 32nd Streets, because that's going to be an economic driver for us as well. And it's a safety issue, accessibility issue, and we want to make sure that we're going to develop. That's one of the only areas that we can develop, so we'll continue to work on that and continue to remind the commission that we're part of District 1 and we're not to be forgotten. So just wanted to give an update there. I did want to lastly want to touch bases on the capital outlay. You may have read that it died in the senate, it was the senate's fault, and I'm not here about pointing fingers, I just want to give the facts on the way that it went, because it affects us all. We know that the state economy has not moved at all in the last four years. We know that the jobs are just not there. And it's frustrating when you have, first of all, so many dollars in projects that are just sticking at the Department of Finance, projects that our city has got to wait and wait and wait for these grants to bring us to come in. We've got to get those dollars out. There's about $800 million right now just sitting there. We can put people to work. We can put people on projects getting utilized, because the longer we wait on these projects, the more expensive it's going to be to repair them. So that's one area. The other area is that we can't leave $237 million, which is currently what's sitting there right now, in this capital outlay bill. We need to get it out there. And what took place right there, when you had to tell us some issues that were taking effect with capital outlay, and unfortunately, the first deadline was made March 6th to turn all your capital outlay requests, because you guys participated in the Prospectors event and the Prospectors Forum, we're ready to go. We're making sure that we're covering all of our bases, and it makes it very difficult for a project to be vetoed. March 6th deadline was missed by the House of Representatives. We extended it to March 11th. March 11th deadline was missed. So we knew there was things taking place. Finally, on March 16th, the senate said we have to act on this. So we acted on it, sent it out, and I want to be clear on this. This was a bipartisan bill. It passed 40 to 1 in the New Mexico State Senate. So we had support from the Republicans and support from the Democrats, because it was a fair way to go. We received that capital outlay bill from the House with added projects put in there, projects being taken away in the late hours of the session, actually 16 minutes ago in the legislative session. In that bill, there was $80 million that were removed, mostly from senior citizen centers, from our universities, from our tribal areas throughout the state. And you can't expect that a bill that has just been stripped of $80 million, specifically $500,000 that was going to be hit to your Western New Mexico University, and $250,000 that was going to be taken out of Fort Baird Medical Center for safety upgrades for our patients, and not have a debate. You can't expect us to not have a debate there. And I think that it was a political strategy, it was a political ploy, that was done to basically set the stage for the 2016 election and why the New Mexico State Senate needs to change. I stand here strongly and I give you my word and my commitment that you send me up there to defend every dollar that we can get in our community. And when there's dollars going to be taken away, I'll never vote yes. I'll make sure that I advocate for our communities, and I appreciate the trust you've given me. I also wanted just to touch really briefly on the issue with where we're at as far as your budgets. And I have to say, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, working with Alex is a real treat. He's someone that we're very blessed to have in our community. He's straightforward, he's honest. If I have a question, I know that I can ask him, and I'm going to get exactly the answer that I need, even if I didn't want that specific answer. And we're very blessed to have a city manager as Mr. Brown, and I want to make sure and say that publicly, and thank you, not only for what you do for the work with the state side, but the work that you do locally with all of our residents here. We are very blessed to have you, so thank you. With that, when you're looking at your budget, I want to make sure and I stand in support of you as a council, because in no way were you guys ever mismanaging your funds. Well, you guys remember in a position where you were just looking the other way instead of paying attention to the finances. You were doing that. When this Hold Harmless issue took place, you guys were as blindsided as we were. And I sit on that committee where that bill went through. It was done the night before the legislative session. So I commend you guys for the financial work you guys have done. And I want to make sure that we know is a library important to Silver City? Absolutely. You know, the museums are part of Silver City? Absolutely. And I'll do everything I can to make sure and make a fix of it and to make sure that I provide the support that our residents deserve and never place the blame on our city council on this issue, because you guys were doing the job you're supposed to do, and all you're doing right now is trying to pick up the pieces on the things that were basically put on your shoulders. So with that, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'll be happy to step for any questions, and I thank you for this time to allow me to share some of the detailed information that happened in this legislative session.
Thank you, Senator. I very much appreciate your update and also your discussion and what you've done for us as a community, especially when it comes to Hold Harmless. You've gone above and beyond and then had to sit back and listen to us, give that general bad name to the state, and we know that individually that you've been a champion of ours and you've been doing everything you can to remedy the situation or even simply mitigate the situation. I appreciate all your efforts, and whenever we make comments about the state, please, by all means, don't take that personally, because I know everything that you do, and I enjoy your work and I enjoy working with you. With that, is there any questions for the Senator? Counselor Amos Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Senator Tomadas, what can citizens, organizations, other entities do to encourage a special session to consider capital outlay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counselor Smith. I appreciate that, because there's been a lot of discussion. At the end of legislative session, by protocol and ceremony, three members of the senate will go to the house and inform them we've completed our business. Three members of the house will come to the senate and inform us that we've completed our business. And three members from each house go to the governor's office and informs the governor that we've completed our business. I happen to be one of those three senators who was to go to the governor's office and inform that we completed our business. It wasn't the most pleasant of exchanges, but at the same time, I was taking the high road, being the statesman that we want to be. You know, I listened to the frustration, and during that discussion, the governor was very clear and said that there will be no special session, that capital is dead. That was the end. Time has passed, had a chance to cool off, and the pressures that's coming in from the business community, as well as many of the local governments, is really changing the discussion there. We need to go to special session. We need to get these dollars out there, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we're not going to expand the agenda of the special session. We don't need to go in the special session to talk about tax breaks. We don't need to go in the special session to talk about other divisive issues that may be there, because the longer we're there and the longer the agenda, that's about $50,000 a day of our taxpayer money. We need to go in there, pass a capital outlay bill that's fair. And I want to make sure and be clear on this. I understand that there's road needs in southeast New Mexico. I traveled all around the state. I saw the needs there in eastern part of New Mexico. Very important with the industries that they have, with oil companies as well, but we have needs here too. And the needs here are very important as well. We have the mining industry. We have many trucks that come through our areas as well. So before dollars are taken from our communities, senior citizen centers, tribal areas, universities, that we make sure that we find a way to bring the revenue in without cutting the most needed areas of our state. So ultimately, I completely support a special session, but I will not go into special session if more things are added to the agenda at cost of taxpayers' dollars.
To just maybe elaborate on that question, is there anything that you would like to see us do as far as requesting from the governor or anything?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, I didn't answer that portion of your question. I know as of today, those 57 mayors that had signed on to a letter, and I'm not sure if you were one of those mayors that signed on to a letter to the governor requesting a special session. If you haven't done so, I would maybe do some, find out how that was taking place, and then work through your municipal league. I think that the municipal league has a lot of credibility, as well as our Association of Counties, to work together in a unified voice and say, "We need a special session." With that, it's important to us in Silver City, not only do we lose the $100,000 that I talked about that was requested by Alex, we lose those matching funds that could be utilized as well for our road repairs. So I want to make sure that we work on it together and work that angle. Almost posable being a special session within the next three weeks.
Is there any other questions? Senator?
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
I just wanted to say something. I just want to thank Senator Morales, because he carried the bill for the Colonius Initiative funding, which we've been dealing with in the last council meeting, and we will be dealing again next council meeting. We got $1.1 million from Colonius last year. We got the agreements right the day before the session started, and we're already awarding those projects. So, you know, they went after that funding. The senator fought again this year to keep that funding, and that funding is very important to us, because I believe they're looking to award another $18 million this year on May 7th, and it'll be, the hearing will be, the awards will be done here. So whoever can be here to support our projects, we'd appreciate it. But I really want to thank him for all that work and all the access that the senator has given the town, to all the state agencies and the assistance and the nudges sometime to get people to at least call us back sometimes. So I really appreciate all the work that he's done, and we've worked really close to with each other, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. And I know we've talked about it before, the senator and I went to school together and have known each other for several years, and at all levels, whether it was 10, 11 years old, playing Little League, or going to school and going through junior high and high school together, at all facets of life, he's been an asset to our community, and I'm so happy and grateful to see you just continuing on that exact same path of trying to work hard and just trying to serve everybody around you, and you're doing an admirable job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, appreciate it.
Any other staff reports?
No. I told everybody no.
You told everybody no? Okay.
No.
I like that. Moving on the agenda, you need a break, or do you want to? Moving on to new business. First item under new business is approval/disapproval of public celebration permit application for a Memorial Weekend Festival sponsored by Q's Southern Bistro LLC on May 22nd to the 23rd, 2015, from 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM on Pope Street and at 101 West College Avenue. Silver City, New Mexico, license holder information. Branding Iron Brewing Company, owner's name, Q Southern Bistro LLC, 101 West College Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. Mr. Pita?
Hi.
How are you?
How y'all doing today? It's good. So basically, we're asking for the approval for the Blues Festival weekend. We're planning, hopefully, to be blocking off the east side of Pope Street, which I'm currently working on the paperwork, leaving the west side of Pope Street open, and doing a beer garden from where college starts to right there at the end of pretty much the property line of where Q's is and just right there on the east side of the street, doing a beer garden, setting up a stage for live music, and having basically live music and bands and stuff like that, and serving our brewed beer out on the street.
Very similar to your past events?
There, it's exactly the same. The only thing is, last year, we did both sides of the street, and this year, I just thought it'd be better just to do one side of the street, just because it was... thought it'd be better just to do one side of the street just because it was, both sides of the street, it's so much space and with the amount of people that we get, the traffic is more in and out and we could still hold a pretty good amount of people even with that one area just blocked off. There, I mean, we could still hold probably an extra 200 or 300 people, so I think that that would be plenty. Plus whatever's inside of Q's and on the patio and then on the front part. So it's, I mean, yeah, it's almost identical. There's not going to be any changes or anything that's new and it'll be associated with what we're doing, collaborating with the Arts Council that Friday after the bands are playing. They're at the park. We're having an after-party that Friday night plus bike registration. And then the following Saturday is just basically our yearly, our yearly anniversary. So I try always have something on that day.
Any questions? Councilor Bettison?
Well, not necessarily a question, I'm going to comment. I'm pleased that it's only on the east side because it does leave room for pedestrians and those with disabilities to get down the sidewalk and to be able to get in and out and fire lane too, which, you know, with it being a three-day weekend, a big one with Taj Mahal coming, I think that everything we could do to ensure that our fire folks and the emergency folks can get access if need be, NYPD, it's great. So I appreciate it.
Yeah, it overall makes it easier on us too because then it's less fence that we have to break down.
I was going to say.
Less of an area of having to clean up and stuff like that and it makes it actually easier for us to keep our eye on everything where you have all that area, you know, you have to have somewhat at each corner of, security-wise, at each corner of the fencing and all that other stuff. So it makes it a lot easier for us too as well.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I could tell you the bands that are coming if you guys want to. Sorry, I'm going to interrupt.
No, 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 absolutely.
Yeah, it's going to be a pretty good lineup too. What we're going to be having, the first night, that Friday, we're having a band called Dusty Low and they're a really good band out of El Paso, Texas, that are going to be coming down here. And they play a lot of blues, country, rock and stuff like that. And then on the Saturday, we're having another band out of Los Cruces, which is called Overcome Los Cruces and they play classic rock, a little bit of blues, soul. They're a really, really, really good band too. So we booked, as well as to kind of, the Arts Council's getting, you know, you said Taj Mahal, so we're getting another up and up kind of the standard of what we're going to be doing too. And then because we always have hell to pay, they're going to be playing their local band too as well. They'll be opening up on that Saturday for us. So it's going to be fun. I'm excited about it.
I want to take a motion. Councilor Kano?
I move to approve a public celebration permit application for a Memorial Weekend Festival sponsored by Q's Southern Bistro LLC on May 26th, 23rd, 2015, from 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Pope Street and at 101 West College Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico. License holder information, Branding Iron Brewing Company. Owner name, Q's Southern Bistro LLC, 101 West College Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061.
Mr. Mayor, a second. As read.
We have a motion, a second, as read into the record. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion, a second, as read into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilor Bettison?
Mr. Mayor, I move for a short break. Mr. Mayor, a second.
We have a motion, a second for a short break. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in recess. Call this meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is, under new business, is approval disapproval of resolution number 2015-08 declaring the intent of the town council of the town of Silver City, New Mexico, to consider for adoption and inducement resolution authorizing an approving submission of an application for project approval to the New Mexico State Board of Finance for allocation of qualified conservation bonds for the implementation of a green community program and other qualified conservation projects and directing the town manager, town finance director and town clerk to take necessary action in connection with the application to the New Mexico State Board of Finance.
As you know, we've been working on the mirroring project of New Mexico and as part of that project, it's our responsibility to get the financing for the project. And so we were working with Mark Valenzuela from George K. Baum, who we usually work with to work on the financing. And this is one of the financing sources that he's, they've identified that would benefit this type of project and like the gentleman talked about earlier in the day, other conservation-type projects. In fact, earlier today, we talked about some other projects that we might be able to work on, such as we're looking at a solar array at the Gabby Hayes well and the transmission infrastructure that would be required. And so there's many, many, many opportunities that we can work on through this type of funding. So with that, I'll let Mark explain it and introduce Neil, who's their specialist in this stuff. So.
Mayor and members of council, for the record, my name is Mark Valenzuela. I'm First Vice President for George K. Baum Company.
Should turn the red.
Oh, there we go. There we go. So for the record, Mark Valenzuela, First Vice President of George K. Baum Company. We have worked with you on several of your bond issues and financing and we look forward to participating with you on this item. I'm going to invite Neil Skyver, who is our expert with our firm for renewable energy financing, up to describe this program to you. And in the meantime, I'm going to hand out some financing numbers just to kind of give you a perspective of how this can all work together and frankly, why we're recommending this qualified energy conservation bond process. Because it really is beneficial from a financing perspective. We can, and I'll give you the bottom line now, but I want to walk through the numbers, but we can get financing for you for 20 years at 1%. And that is just unheard of. It's just not possible to get the kind of financing in the market, but in this case, because of this program, you can do that. So let me invite Neil Skyver up and describe what the qualified energy conservation bond process is. Talk about how it relates to your next item, which is the Green Community Program. The two of them are tied together and then I'll come back and describe how these numbers and how this financing works.
Mark, they have the numbers.
Oh, they have the numbers?
I gave them a copy of what you gave me.
Okay. Fantastic. Hello, the mayor and town council. My name is Neil Skyver. I'm with George K. Baum and Company. And as Alex just mentioned, I'm the expert in all that stuff. So I'm part of what we call our renewables and energy infrastructure team at George K. Baum. I'm a partner to Mark and our other bankers, working with our customers who are looking at energy efficiency and renewable energy projects. And the qualified energy conservation bonds is a program that was created under ARA in 2009. It was created and authorized by Congress and it was a $3.2 billion allocation nationwide and the state of New Mexico received a whopping $20 million based on our population. And in the last legislative session, not the one we just heard about, but the last one, they created a mechanism for local governments to apply for allocations of these bonds through the State Board of Finance. And the State Board of Finance has a long list of things that we need to present to them, information about the projects and other information, but one of the requirements is that the governing body of the applicant submit an inducement resolution that they know about the project and they're supporting it and that they're willing to support the application. And so once we, if the council approves a resolution here, inducement resolution, that'll allow us to work with the staff to put together an application, submit it to the State Board of Finance. The State Board of Finance will have to review it and will have its public meeting to allocate. So on the allocation, I mentioned there's 20 million. Nobody has applied for it yet in the state, so if we get our application in, we may be the first ones. So that's a good thing. By its name, it's called a qualified energy conservation bond. So under the legislation, the tax code that created this mechanism, there is, as its name indicates, a provision for energy conservation projects. So if the town wanted to change out lights or do an energy efficiency program, it was clearly identified. It also clearly allows for solar and other renewable projects, but it doesn't specifically reference water meters and water savings projects. That, it took about two or three years and the IRS finally came out with some regulations late last year that opened up the definition of projects that are allowed under what's called a green community program. And so what we are suggesting is that the town create a green community program that then these water meters and other community programs could be eligible for. Another example is streetlights. That's, that could be a green community program. So it's basically programs that are available to the entire community as opposed to items that are inside of a building or a solar panel, something like that. So that's, the definition of the green community program is really from our friends at the IRS and that's, those are the steps that are needed to allow broader programs, including other ones that you may be thinking of as well. So I'd be happy to answer more questions, but I turn it back over to Mark now.
Very quick. Councilor Bettison, you have a question?
Yeah, under the Green Community Program, with something like, we discussed this at the last meeting, getting side loaders with new covered recyclable bins to increase recycling, would that fit within the?
So it's a recycle?
Right now, we have open containers that do recycling and there's a series of issues with that with, you know, how the wind blows in our area. And so one of the things, and we've also seen an increase in recycling, a significant increase across the town. So one of the things that was discussed was getting a side loader and specifically getting green rather than blue because we already use blue trash cans, that will be specifically for recyclables so that it will increase the amount people can recycle and it will decrease littering and other issues.
I need to, I need to check because I'm not certain if the green, the green community programs relate to things that are saving energy, are increasing efficiencies, those kinds of things. So I'd probably need to run that by a tax lawyer to really give you the right answer on that one.
I think that Mr. Brown could probably explain it a little bit better because it does reduce the amount that goes into landfill.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's the way I see it.
We can work on it. It's basically expanding our recycling program and we could expand it outside the community, but we can talk about it.
Okay. And I did want to clarify one thing about these qualified energy conservation bonds. These are not cash from the federal government. It's not a grant. It's a subsidy program. So the city would need to enter into some sort of a financing, a bond-type arrangement and then would be, the city would be eligible for a subsidy directly from the federal treasury to buy down the interest rate.
Speaking.
Yeah, and I can actually walk you right through those numbers very quickly. So as I understand, Mr. Brown has provided you these financing numbers and just for the sake of clarity and time, let me just take you to slide two or page two. And as Neil had mentioned, this program created by the federal government requires that municipalities sell these bonds as taxable bonds. That's very different than what you normally do or what we've done for you in the past. Municipalities have always had the privilege of selling bonds as tax-exempt bonds. And the difference there is that the investors of a tax-exempt bond do not have to pay tax, federal or state, on their interest earnings that they receive from the city or the town of Silver City. So you have many investors that like that hedge. They like to not have to pay tax on those earnings. In this case, the federal government said, "No, these will not be tax-exempt bonds. These will be taxable bonds," so that they look more like a private company selling bonds. And therefore, the interest rate is higher because the investors would have to pay tax on their earnings. But then what the federal government said is, "Look, we want to incentivize municipalities to do these kinds of things, so we will provide a payment back to the municipality in the form of an interest rate subsidy." So while you might have to pay a taxable rate and just for, in this scenario, that taxable rate we're using is 3.96% taxable. So the federal government said, "In that scenario, we're going to give you close to 70% back in terms of what you're paying interest on." So on slide two, what you see is simply a calculation of what we're, what we're just generally assuming worst-case scenario in this, in this water meter financing to be 4.5 million paid off over 20 years and we're showing you what the taxable rate would be. So as an example, in the first year, the interest payment would be $180,000 and change. In the second year, 172, based on the 3.96 taxable rate. Now, because the federal government is willing to provide a subsidy back to you, and this is a direct payment they make back to the town of Silver City, they will, and I'm going to slide, or page three now, that payment they'll make in year one based on the 3.96% taxable rate, they will pay you back $126,680 back to the town of Silver City. So they've really reduced your interest costs. And so what happens is while you are paying 3.96% to a bond investor, the federal government is paying you back 2.87%, so your net cost of financing is 1%. And so if you look at this, you'll see that over the 20 years, you will receive $1.379 million of interest payments subsidies back from the federal government through borrowing under this program. Again, this is the reason why we're asking you to take this, this step to pass the inducement resolution, to also pass the Green Community Program for the next resolution, so that you have that opportunity to take advantage of this type of financing. So I know that was a little bit more detailed than you were probably expecting. I'll stop there. Stand for any questions you might have. This really is the first step in the process. After this, we'll present an application to the State Board of Finance. We will await their approval for that and then once we have approval, we'll be back in front of the council to start the bond process.
Mayor, council, if you look at, the reason that, on the second page, that they're looking at 250, a net $259,000 debt service payment is because that is the guarantee that we're currently working on with the YESCO. So this gets us into that guarantee. We may not, even if we do not end up going with the YESCO, we can still issue these bonds if we choose to go out on our own and do an RFP for the meters ourself and then tie another project to it that qualifies as well. So it is not specifically designated to the YESCO itself. It's designated to the meter project.
I want to just, just want to add to that by adopting the resolution to submit the application doesn't commit the town to moving forward. Obviously, we've still got to step with the Board of Finance and then come back before any other, so there's no, there's no financial obligation at this point.
Is there any other questions or comments for Councilor Bettison?
I have a question for you, Alex. I know it's not, it's dedicated to the water meter project, not to YESCO as you said, but you've brought up before the option of us going out independent and doing it, but my understanding is that when YESCO did their presentation, part of it was there was being guaranteed that if we did not get the savings that they anticipated, that they would actually be paying us.
Yes. So that's true. But for instance, say the number that they gave us for... But for instance, say, the number that they gave us for, for the project currently is 4.1 million. But say, I'm able to purchase and get, purchase them and install them for 2.2 million, then we need to borrow less, and maybe we can combine, like I said, combine this with another project, such as the solar and transmission line, and do that instead. And still, we have a study already, which we can purchase from as part of the YESCO project, that says to any financing company that actually the savings that we should get isn't the 256, it's more like 320, because they only guaranteed 80% of what the study said that we would get. So, you know, we still have those financial, we still have that cushion that's based on the study. So we still have many options to look at.
Which is a good support if we go forward to get the funding, I mean, to have that study there.
It is already done, complete.
Right, okay. Thank you.
So even though there is a specific project that's really, was the impetus of this, this opens up a tremendous amount of opportunities for us on different, different projects that would qualify, correct?
Yes, that's correct, Mayor.
I like that. Very quickly, if, with no other questions or comments, I would like to open it up to the public for their comments on this resolution, if anybody would like to. Anyone from the public?
Hello, my name is Sandra Michaud, and I'm not going to address the numbers or anything like that, but I just wanted to have a, wanted to make a statement about the entire concept of the Green Community. The resolutions that are to be put to a vote tonight are whether or not to invest in the future of Silver City. Should the town take on debt by issuing bonds to implement a Green Community Program and other conservation and sustainability programs? I say yes. I understand that to many people, debt is a four-letter word, but there are different kinds of debt. There is the debt that many people get into because they want that new Android phone, or that trip, or that big-screen TV, and they want it now. And then there is the debt that is really an investment in your future, a mortgage for a house in a good neighborhood, a safe car, a college education for your kids. Those are debts that will pay off in the long run. I know there are many people who may not believe that climate change is real, or that it may be human-caused. Personally, I think that scientific evidence is overwhelming, but I'm not here to argue that. You have insurance for your car, even though you don't really think you're going to get in an accident. You insure your home, even though you probably won't be burglarized or lose everything in a fire. You have life insurance, so your family can be taken care of in case something happens to you. So why not invest in sustainability insurance for our future, just in case? Finally, we need to consider the legacy we are leaving of the young. I hope that by supporting sustainability efforts now, the lives they have will be healthier and safer than might be otherwise if we do not take action now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Bohannon. I'm speaking in favor of Resolutions 2015-08 and 09 regarding the ability to incur debt specifically for Green Community Projects. I encourage the commissioners to vote in favor of these resolutions to improve the quality of life in our community. Thank you.
My name is Harriet Rogers, and I'm going to be extremely brief. I would like to support a yes vote for Resolutions 2015-08 and 09, so that the town can incur debt in support of Green Community Projects. I think there is nothing in the world more important than moving towards sustainability. So I am in favor of anything the town can do to support such a move.
I appreciate those, the public comments. You know, as I was mentioning before, there is a specific project that really motivated this, this resolution forward. But it also, it does open up a tremendous amount of opportunities. And one thing that I always like is to have as many tools in my economic toolbox as possible, and this just, this is just another one of those tools that allows us to move forward and also just build for our future and give us the, give us the foundation that will sustain us into the future. So I appreciate that. Is there any final comments or questions for anybody? Councilor Madison?
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved to approve Resolution Number 2015-08, declaring the intent of the Town Council of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico, to consider for adoption an inducement resolution authorizing and approving submission of an application for project approval to the New Mexico State Board of Finance for allocation of Qualified Conservation Bonds for the implementation of a Green Community Program and other Qualified Conservation Projects, and directing the Town Manager, Town Finance Director, and Town Clerk to take necessary action in connection with the application to the New Mexico State Board of Finance.
Councilor Amenssmann?
I'd like to second that motion as stated.
We have a motion and a second as read into the record. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second as read into the record. We'll call.
Councilor Madison?
Aye.
Councilor Amenssmann?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Cottrell?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of Resolution Number 2015-09, establishing a Green Community Program for the benefits of the residents of Silver City. Mr. Brown?
All right. Be experts. Okay, so this is, this is an action for the council to actually authorize the creation of the Green Community Program. That's the IRS provision that I described to you earlier, that broadens the types of projects that can be funded under Qualified Energy Conservation Bonds, among other things, of course, as well. So this is the action to create that.
Councilor Amenssmann?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I read that IRS paper, and one of the things that I have a question about is, we have a number of approved plans. I guess I'll address this to my Town Manager. We have a water conservation plan and a sustainability plan. We've been working on projects for a long time. Is this just another categorization? Because it looked to me, as I was reading the IRS listing of approved projects, that many, many, many of those projects are ones that have already been recommended via those plans.
It would seem that it's just another, another categorization, just like you said, which encompasses everything that we've already been doing. So it's just reaffirming it to the IRS that we're, we're doing what we've been doing. So, yes.
Thank you.
And, Robert had a question.
My question was, by passing this resolution and identifying ourselves as a Green Community Program operator, does that invite the federal government to exert any jurisdiction over this government or this town?
I can, I can answer that in the context of the Qualified Energy Conservation Bonds. So when the town issues bonds that are Qualified Energy Conservation Bonds, so then you are now involved in an IRS program, the U.S. Treasury program, where you will submit to the IRS a form, it's the IRS, there's a form, and you submit that to them prior to making a debt service payment. And then on the day you make a debt service payment, you'll get a reimbursement, the amounts that Mark described, the cash reimbursements back. So you'll, by, by the nature of issuing the bonds and being eligible for the program, it will, it will raise the amount of, you know, visibility.
Right. My questioning is whether the town cedes any of its sovereignty, any more of its sovereignty to the federal government by being involved in this federal program, or is it purely a financial arrangement?
It's purely a financial arrangement.
In fact, we already do this with the tax-exempt bonds because of arbitrage and all that other stuff, right? So that we deal with IRS, so.
And all of the rules governing your tax-exempt bonds that are issued apply here. So it's through the IRS's municipal bond provision, so.
So it's the same as what we already do.
As before, I'd like to just reiterate, I think it's, it's a great tool, an additional tool for our toolbox, and I fully support it and want to increase every opportunity we have to, for the betterment of our community. And with that, Councilor Amenssmann?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I move to approve Resolution Number 2015-09, establishing a Green Community Program for the benefits of the residents of Silver City.
Councilor Madison?
Mr. Mayor, a second, the motion is stated.
We have a motion and a second as read into the record. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. To me, this step that we're doing here is similar to what NMFA and other folks require. I mean, it's just their version of a resolution that's necessary to become part of the program and to show our support for it.
The resolutions, the corollarys resolution that was passed to become a, it's just, yes.
It's just one more, it's their little hurdle for this particular program.
Yes, and for this program, then, you know, it does open it up for us to look at other projects in the future.
Well, I'm, I'm in support of this. I think it's, like the mayor said, it's critical to have more tools in our toolbox, and this is a way for us to acquire funding for projects that are needy and worthy and that benefit our citizens. So I think it's, I'm glad that we have another option available to us.
It is, it is very important to, to have these options and, yes. And just as a, as a general comment, that being said, I don't want tools in our toolbox that are not good for our community, not, not socially important, not economically important. We don't want these tools just for the sake of having tools. You know, this is a, beyond that, it is a very important statement that we're making in ensuring that we're looking at things that are, that are going to continue working for us and help sustain our resources and help our, our future budgets, and that way our, our children and grandchildren and our future councils actually have a, a community to, to move forward. And with that, we have a motion and a second as read into the record. We'll call.
Councilor Amenssmann?
Aye.
Councilor Amenssmann?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Cottrell?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is appointments to the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. Just take me a second to bring those up. We had three applications for two openings. I, I would like to appoint Nancy Johnson and Janie Katz to those two positions. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
They are so appointed. And the last item is an appointment to the Recycling Advisory Committee. We do have an applicant, and it seems like a nice, high-quality applicant and highly recommended by her peers and the board. And I'd like to appoint Dr. Garland to that committee. Are there any objections? She is appointed. And we'll let the rest of the agenda do what it does. Councilor Madison?
I move to adjourn.
I'll think of it. We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.